To call this meeting to order, this is a regular meeting, cadavered as a committee of the hall for the council of the city of Southfield from March 21st, 2016. Commander Quirk, please call a roll.
Thank you. Mr. Fakasi.
Here.
Mr. Brightwell.
Here.
Ms. Seymour.
Here.
Mr. Mandelbauer.
Here.
Ms. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Two southern members present.
Thank you very much. I would like to change the order of the agenda. Our person speaking number one has been delayed, so we'll delay them number two first. And that's the land development consulting services for the city-owned property, former North Line Mall redevelopment site. Mr. City Administrator, would you like to?
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration would like to present an interview to the council, OHM Orchard Hilton and Columbus Inc., OHM advisors out of Longmont. They have been, it is our recommendation that they're the best qualified national team to prepare the market-based design, branding, and preliminary cost estimates for the redevelopment of the North Line Mall site. Our purchasing department did an outstanding job. We received eight proposals from firms across the country and Midwest. Couple of them clearly had international experience as well. Comprehensive evaluation of all eight responses were reviewed and scored. Two weeks ago Friday, we interviewed five of the finalists, and it's our recommendation, based on overall qualifications and price, that OHM advisors be the project team. We have a representative from OHM who's prepared to make a presentation to city council and decide on his on the agenda for action, formal action, this evening at our 7:00 PM meeting.
Okay. Who from OHM is going to?
Al Acevis. And our team was our DDA director, Al Acevis, James Ralph, DDA chairperson, Michelle Freeman, myself. We had an outside consultant, Mr. Stokes, was also involved in the selection. Al?
Thank you, Fred. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. As Fred has described the process that the committee went through in the selection of the land development consulting company, we ended up, there were eight, narrowed it down to five, and ultimately, we recommended that OHM presented the best alternative and best useful analysis of the project. So this evening with me, I have Jim Hout of OHM, who is the Vice President of Planning and Urban Design, who will come up and make a few comments, and then we can open for questions. Thank you.
Could you state your name and address, business address, for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Jim Hout, I'm Vice President of OHM. My business address is 580 North 4th Street, Columbus, Ohio. Good evening, members of council and mayor. We're honored to be here today to present what we believe is a team that brings together good knowledge, south local knowledge, which we find we can reach out to the rest of the country there. You've known OHM as your city engineer for, I believe, 11 years. Let me tell you about the rest of OHM. And start with my background. I am a urban planner. I founded my own company in 1893 in Columbus, Ohio. Our firm was predominantly dealing with private sector development, and expertise was in large-scale mixed-use developments, which I was doing around the country. I merged my practice with OHM about six years ago. OHM now is a full architecture, engineering, and planning firm with offices throughout the Midwest. I happen to be out of our Columbus office. We have over 50 planners and architects within the firm. Majority of those, again, work out of our Columbus office. So it may not be the OHM that you've seen or known or worked with, but we are very large in this area. Again, I'm a partner in the firm, I'm Vice President, and also a member of the Board of Directors of OHM. I will be the project manager for this project. I think it's important to understand kind of our philosophy and why we do what we do. Just need to cooperate. We believe strongly in what we call fusion of community values, marketplace, and placemaking. And why is that important? Because, again, as a professional urban planner dealing mostly with private sector work, I was very excited, and one of the reasons I merged with OHM is to bring their 50 years of experience in helping communities with my 30 years of experience in private development. Because with a strong belief is what works is when you can match the real values of that community, you can match solid understanding of that community, its people and the marketplace, and bring all those together, that's where it creates sustainability. So we're too far in this country, and too often, we've gotten those things broken apart. So it's really important that that balancing of community values, understanding of the marketplace, and strong understanding of placemaking is what creates great places and places for people. So that's what we believe in. We also believe strongly in southeast Michigan, and we believe strongly in Southfield. This is our community. We've worked here for 11 years, we're invested in this community, we believe in this community, our heritage in making this community better. We believe, as I said, that we brought together a team that has a strong tie to your community, a strong local understanding, with some of the finest experts in the country at doing these types of developments. Again, OHM, I will be the project manager for this project. We will provide services on the project management side, planning, development, also transportation engineering, civil, which I think you're very familiar with, those services, as well as one of our expertises is in public engagement, and we will lead those exercises. We've had time teamed with Kelson RTKL. RTKL is one of the finest architecture firms in the country, especially when it comes to developing these types of projects. They have worked throughout the country and internationally. We're working with professionals out of their Chicago and Dallas office, and they will provide architecture services and planning for us. One of the key components of our team is a gentleman named Tom Carter. Tom Carter is a development advisor. I'll talk a little bit more about Tom's background, but Tom has been a personal friend of mine for over 20 years. Tom has developed and owns the type of projects that you would like to see here. So he's an important component of our team. We wanted to team him with strong local presence. We brought Monker in because we believe when it comes to doing the branding in this, it's very important to understand, have your pulse on the community. Monker's here, they understand your community, they have a pulse on the community, their ability to get up to speed quickly and understand this community is very important when you're in a branding situation. We've also teamed then with AKT Earlis. We're using AKT Earlis to provide environmental understanding of the land. The reason we've chose them is because they have already been working for you, they've crawled through every inch of this piece of property. They have an understanding right now, and they can very quickly bring us up to speed to the physical conditions of that property. And that's very important, because again, we need to understand those things to put the best plan forward. We believe that team already has an understanding and allows to get the ground a lot faster. We teamed them with a market analyst, Ken Daner. Again, Ken Daner is somebody I've worked with for 30 years, I've always experienced a little more. He has already worked on a number of projects in your community, he's out of Columbus, Ohio, as well as nationally, close member of the team, knows how to work together with us, understands your community, again, that's why we're bringing him here. We've also added Edna Bell. Edna is somebody that we have worked with in the past on the public engagement side of it. Again, she's very strong at doing stakeholder meetings, she's from Detroit, she understands this market very well, she will be very helpful to us in leading through that public engagement and helping us through the stakeholder meetings. The last person on our team, again, is Arcadis. Arcadis is part of RTKL, Kelson, so they're the parent company, they're also the engineering side of that company. They will bring structural engineering to the team as we need structural engineering as we go through the process. They're located on Toledo, and have an office in there. I've also added as an additional resource to the team, a firm named Ice Miller. Ice Miller is a national law firm, very prominent national law firm. They have a very strong economic development division out of their Columbus office. We've worked with them on numerous projects. We brought them in as an advisor. Again, we don't know where they fit into the scope, but we think they're smart people that can add expertise to how you finance these projects, what kind of things are out there. They're a strong resource that we bring to the team. So again, I talked to RTKL under the top five for all architecture of the firms and projects, especially as it relates to doing these type of projects. Very strong expertise nationally, which is why we brought them in. Their first key project was the whole waterfront redevelopment of Baltimore. So if you've ever been down to the home or even the waterfront redevelopment of Baltimore, that was their project. That was their first kind of major project. The Daner company, again, I have worked with Ken personally for over 30 years. He brings solid understanding, he has worked for communities, he's worked for developers, probably one of the leading market analysts in the country. The other thing that's really important, again, down here is that bottom line. He's done 90 studies in the Southfield, Oakland County. He has a database already developed, he's starting from solid understanding of local database. Why is that important? All these things speed up our learning, makes us smarter faster, which is why we're leaning on these people to understand the local market moving forward. Again, I talked to Monker, solid, we're very impressed. We haven't worked with him in the past, but what we've seen with him, we're very impressed of him. They're a local company, give local understanding, a 20-year company. So we think they'll bring a great asset to the team. Tom Carter, as I told you, Tom Carter is a personal friend and a developer. Tom Carter was a partner in Steiner Organization. Tom Carter was the Development Director for the Easton Project. He still has ownership in the Easton Project. So he brings a understanding. After that, he left and went down and became a managing partner of a company called Trademark out of Dallas, Texas. Trademark was probably one of the leading developers of mixed-use town center projects throughout the country. Tom was one of their managing partners, and you can see some of the projects that he was the developer on throughout the country. Brings incredible expertise. He's now working out of Columbus, Ohio, where he lives, as a consultant. He and I work together on a number of things. He brings strong understanding of how you make these things happen. He's been there, he's took ownership in them. So again, we think that's invaluable when we understand that we're just not doing a study here. This isn't about creating a bunch of pretty pictures and studying, walking away. This is about being your advisors and helping you get something real up here. We will bring people to the team to understand how you go from a vision or a dream to something real. That's critical to the success of the project. So again, to talk a little bit about some of these projects, I'll go through these quickly. This is a project that I've done in Indianapolis. It's a 400-acre mixed-use town development. The reason I tell you this is we've been involved in this for over 20 years. We developed a master plan, we wrote the design standards, we did the zoning entitlements, and right now, we coordinate, there are multiple developers that have developed this property. We coordinated a lot of those activities. We also do all the design approvals for the project. So understanding how to deal with large mixed-use projects with multiple developers, and how you get some consistency out of the project. North Line Mall, it's a little bit smaller, but a very similar project in the Columbus area. Again, we did the master plan for that property, it's currently working its way through development right now. It was given in essence to by the developer, to the city, who's formed a nonprofit, to work on the development of it. We were actually brought in by a developer that they selected to kind of work with them in the planning. Keeping here is two of these buildings. The one on the far left right there was a Macy's that's been converted to office buildings, and the lower one right there was a JCPenney's that's been converted into a performing arts center. So, and in the middle is really a neighborhood center that was really related to servicing the neighborhood. So similarities. Wilson Bridge Road, I bring this up because this is one that a lot of the team members have already worked on. Wilson Bridge Road Corridor is in Worthington, Ohio, it's a 250-acre corridor area right along our outer belt in Columbus, Ohio. This was an area in the 70s that had mid-rise Class A office buildings. They've slipped in the marketplace down to a Class C. It had a specialty retail kind of mall there, about 150 thousand square feet, that was 50% taken. A lot of similarities. We went through, we did a 250, we did a market study for it, using Ken Daner, who did the market analysis. We did extensive public research, we did design charrettes on this process. Tom Carter was part of our team. The end result of the project was Tom Carter put an investment group together and bought the mall. And in turn, we've had $65 million of investment in that project in renovating the mall. The mall's now turned around, the offices have now turned back to Class A space, we've added 141 apartments to it. Same team, similar situation, real results. And right before I left, the city just announced that they're adding a hotel and conference center to the whole development. So again, same situation, same team, positive result. Easton, again, I think you're probably familiar with Easton, it's state of the art when it comes to mixed-use town centers. I think the largest in the country, 2.6 million square feet. And Tom Carter was the Development Director, which meant he was involved in the day-to-day activities that develop in this, including putting financing together, including finding the retailers, negotiating the retailers, managing the design process up there, standpoint. My firm was involved very early on in the overall master plan. The master plan is much more than the town center, because it created, it had Class A office sites, multifamily, other retail around the whole project. So again, you're bringing a guy that still has ownership in this project, who's developed what's probably state-of-the-art in the industry right now.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
On the slide before, you mentioned that Tom Carter had found a financing for that project. Was it just for you? Did he sell that back to the city, or does he still own that?
He, the mall was in a REIT that was not performing, 50% partnership, 50% vacant. He went and put partnerships together, and he was a majority owner, and they bought, with that partnership, they bought the mall.
He still owns it?
He owns the mall still, with a partnership. And he has redeveloped the mall, re-tenanted the mall, and really what he did was really needed. This was originally a specialty high-end clothing mall that was failing. He turned it into a mall for the community, which is what really needed. Now, majority of the acres are restaurants, activities, it's become a town center for the community. That was the right mix. And that town center now, with driven development all the way around, it's allowed that office to go back to Class A, it's allowed the apartments to come in. All these things all work together in a very careful formula. So it's retail, the important thing to understand is retail isn't retail, you have to put the right retail there for the community. That's what the problem here was. They were trying to sell high-end dresses, and what, they had no value to the office buildings next door. Once you started putting restaurants, specialty shops in there, those type of things, it all of a sudden provided an amenity to their adjacent offices, and everything started to strike. Again, Easton. Bay Court Town Center, that's another project that Tom Carter developed in Wisconsin, and actually RTKL worked on this project as well. The reason we point to this is this was an old failed mall, similar situation, a lot of issues, a lot of site issues. Got a post office in the middle of it that they had to figure out how to deal with the post office, had a lot of environmental-related issues. So they really turned this in, they had to use eminent domain to find, picking some pieces that they couldn't control. The end result of it is it's been repurposed now into a mixed-use center with shops, retail, housing, all in there. Tyson Corner, this is a project of RTKL. I'll go over these quickly, just, I don't know a lot of details on these. This is one of the premier mixed-use centers in Indian Springs, Virginia. They've been working on this for probably 20 years. You can see the mall concept in the middle, and then how they added and positioned alternative uses all the way around the mall, to start to generate more activity around the whole thing. Northfield Stapleton, this is one they're recently working at, this is in Denver, Colorado, again, a large mixed-use, entered with an exterior-type mall, and then apartments and supporting uses all the way around the exterior of that project. So I want to talk a little bit, that's kind of what we've done, we'll talk a little bit of our approach to this project. Again, we understand that what we're trying to do here is really utilize community, market, and determine the highest interest for this property. And then create a strategy for how that gets reinvested in the property. Strength of that will be Ken Daner, again, I'm not going to try to be a market expert here. Ken Daner really understands the market and uses a full database meetings. He tracks every sale that goes on. For example, he'll know the rents of every apartment. He'll know, he'll track all that information, he'll use that database to make his recommendations on what's happening in that place. One of the beauties he has is by doing 90 projects, he has a strong understanding already of the database in this community here. Again, we're going to match that with solid site analysis, and really look very hard at creative functional reuses and structures. There are some amazing structures on there, and there's some structures that are history on this property. I mean, RTKL guys, and I've walked it, they were really enthralled by the original Hudson's in the middle of that. It still has the ballroom in it. They were also really excited about the architecture of the power plant, the ability to repurpose that power plant. So one of the things we're going to do is creatively look at these structures, just not from a structural standpoint, but really from a creative standpoint, and say, what can we reuse these, how can these structures be repurposed? If they work from a marketplace standpoint, we'll then go at looking at the structural capabilities. First and foremost, we're going to say, does this fit in? The other thing that we're strong believers in, and when we talked with RTKL, is that this is, this mall has a strong history and tie to the community. The wrong thing for us to do is scrape the whole thing and put something new in there. So we have to find that tie back to the community, we have to make it a place for the community going forward. So we're going to look very hard at preserving elements of this project that bring some of the history back, and then putting it and repurposing it into a new situation. We think that's very critical to the success of the project. Public engagement, we're huge believers in public engagement, and I told you that from our very beginning slide. Again, we're going to do a number of public engagements, including task force meetings, design charrette, stakeholder meetings, public meetings. We're also going to have a website where anybody in the public can get up to date on everything going on in the project. Again, we're a big believer of that, that is a critical part of the process. Building a brand, that's what Monker's going to do. And we really believe there's two parts to the brand. Right now, it's very important that we brand the design exercise we're going through. It's a chance for the community to be part of the rebirth of this mall. And so there's a community part to this. So it's really important that we brand the process we're going through, not the end product, the process we're going through right now. Once we have an understanding of the end product, we can then put a brand strategy together for the end product. But right now, we feel coming right out of the gate, we need to engage the public, we need to send the right image going forward, we need to build excitement about this project. That's what the branding team will do. So we're going to be branding the exercise, the design exercise we're going through. And that will be also shown over websites, social media, and a lot of other elements that we need to do across. Creating the vision, again, that's where, again, RTKL will work with all this in a couple of viewpoints. What we, we have to balance, again, what the community needs are, because they're the ones that are going to drive that with the market realities. But most importantly, we also have to allow for flexibility. This is not going to, this project died over a long period of time, it's not going to come back in a short period of time, it's going to come back over the longer period of time. So getting the ball rolling, giving that flexibility so that we can adjust to changes in the marketplace. Will be designed into this project. There we go. And the other thing that's really important to our team is we build places for people. And this has to belong to the community, therefore it's adopted by the community, therefore they'll buy into it, they care for it, another critical part of our work. And then I think something that we believe hopefully makes our team a little unique in this process is we have Tom Carter, we're going to function on how do you turn this vision into reality. And one thing that Tom clearly understands in our conversations is, once we come up with their vision, there are developers out there that can do this project, there's people that can't do this project. So a important element is reaching out and going to the people that know how to do these projects, so that we have the right people in the game, and really putting a roadmap together for how we make progress. So, and we're going to do all that, believe it or not, in four weeks, four months. Yeah, four months. It's a jam-packed, it'll be a jam-packed schedule. So, again, what we want you to know in our final takeaway here is, again, we are Southfield community advisors here. You had a lot of great national teams. We were blown away by the quality of people that submitted on this project. All those experts were all around the country, when they, after they do their study, they're gone and going home. We're here, we're committed to Southfield. We will be here after this project is done as advisors, helping through this process. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Brightwell?
I understand you will finish your study portion within four months. What would be the typical time to get, would it be years to have the final product in place?
Oh, probably more than that. And then understanding that it will probably break down in stages, there isn't more than likely one large project, it's going to be probably a multitude of projects on this property. I think we would like to get something going as soon as possible. So, I mean, once we're done, there's a whole nother process, but again, writing our P, going out there and finding the right people and negotiating the right process in here. But I can pretty well assure you that it is going to probably take a couple of years to get going. But the same way I'm talking, I envision that this is something that will develop out of over a 10-year-plus timeframe, the final development.
When you indicate that you said, community needs with market realities, the answer you come up with in this four-month period of time, we can definitively say that this is the community need based on what?
Well, we are going to go out and reach out to the community. So what we're going to be looking at is a market study, which will quantify where the market is. We're going to talk to the community and find out their vision, what they would like to see in the community. And then we're going to try to blend those two things. And so rather than a, and so we're going to bring market reality to what the community wants to see, because the more the community buys in and accepts this, and it becomes part of it, you know, the more successful it's going to be, that's the bottom line. So, you know, the worst thing you can do is bring some national guy that doesn't know your community and say, we're going to build this and drop it on the piece of property. You know, that's not a recipe for success. We believe it's going to come out of an understanding of the community, community buying, match that with the marketplace. And so that's kind of how we do our process, and that's what we want through. Now, I have to be honest with you, going forward, a four-month period of time to get through the community engagement is really rushing. We can do it for that, but I would prefer to take a longer period in the community engagement so that we can reach out a little bit better. We will do it, it's not the team, our team can deliver in four months. What we're going to be doing, though, is six public meetings in a very short period of time. Your ability to get people out there to engage is hard to do in six, when you're doing that many meetings in such a short period of time. So we're going to do our best to try to reach as many people as we can. I just wanted to be dead honest with you, sending you collapsing that timeframe, that's where we hurt, that's where we get hurt. It's not in the rest of the team bringing their answers, it's how good we can do the community engagement.
One more question. With respect to community needs and market reality, what is the most weight, is market reality?
Well, if the community wants something that doesn't work in the marketplace, it dies.
Okay.
So it's got to be a balance.
Market reality.
But if we bring something, if we turn around and bring something into the community doesn't want, it will die. doesn't want, it will die also. So, I mean, you've got to balance that act. But the bottom line is if you're going to be successful, it's got to be something that can be a viable business. Yeah?
Mr. Mayor.
Two things. I want to mention that Moncor is working in our Smart Zone. You didn't remember that. And I did sit through one of their presentations. I was very impressed with how they went about marketing planning the Smart Zone. And having sat at this table for many, many years, I'm always concerned that there are people that undersell this community. And I, I can only speculate at the reasons, but for instance, we've tried to get national restaurant chains here, no one would come, no one would come. And I've always believed, and believed, that if you build it, they'll come. And our latest proof of that is our new Applebee's that's been open a year and a half and it's been a huge success. Sometimes it's about somebody putting their foot in the water first and then others follow. And I think, I think we're going to see the same thing across the street here as this property gets developed. And I just hope that you and the team do not undersell this community. This property has great potential between the college there, the Providence Hospital, and then all of the infrastructure that surrounds it, that two freeways and two mile roads that are all in good shape, plus a service drive that's been redone. And a lot of times, it's infrastructure that helps people decide whether to go into an area and we've got it. So I, I just hope that we're, we're not undersold because it's Eight Mile and Greenfield. I want to dream big. I want to see something that turns around the south end of the city and not, well, it's only Eight Mile and Greenfield.
Yeah. I mean, we believe this is a catalyst for the entire city and the redevelopment. That's what we believe in. And that's what we're going to look at for this. The other point I want to make is, again, one of the beauties of having Tom Carter on the team is he has reached out to all of these national users. So he can help us understand what is the benchmarks we need to do to get these people.
But, you know, an example is that we see this kind of thing with people making decisions about zip codes. And I just, I just hope the data, you know, I respect data, I work with data, but I want us to dream big and not undersell the community. And, you know, unfortunately, Eight Mile doesn't enjoy the best reputation, but it's a world of difference between the south side of Eight Mile and the north side. And, I mean, that's a key factor in developing this property.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Mr. Cassie.
Yeah, let me kind of head on straight here. We went to get consultants. And number one, I don't know why Fred and Mr. President, we don't have a copy of the submission to the city to be the ones that received the bid. So that you can study that for yourself to make comments on the proposal to the city. In other words, one sheet of paper doesn't do it for me. And I want to know what, what is being said on the screen and be able to take something as important as this and to sleep on it and see where it's headed. For example, I am very concerned about marketing it, but I don't know, number one, how much this is going to cost OHM to get the, the bid, what the bid was, how much it's going to cost us. Secondly, are they going to, yeah, I see in your environmental study, but are they going to give us a report as to the cost of removing all the environmental situations and bad things to make a hole in that? How much is that going to cost? They're not mentioning when the building is going to be tore down and how much that's going to cost. When you talk about branding and marketing something, I don't know if we're talking about branding and marketing it the way it sits or, or if we're going to take it for not four months, but for a longer period of time, we're going to be paying the $21,000 a month to, on a holding pattern? I guess those are problems that I personally have that, that I, I like to see, you know, my, my idea and what I thought we were going to do is take bids to remove all the environmental and make a hole. Number two is to, to do whatever we could to purchase the buildings that were supposedly in the way, so to speak. They get bids to demolish the whole thing, to level ground, and also get bids to get filled, to fill it. And, and then get a consultant to tell us, here's a piece of property, how do we market it and brand it? And so I don't know what we're marketing and branding. Are we branding it the way it is today? Maybe you can answer, but to sit there with a one-page piece of paper, I mean, I, I mean, I have no objection about OHM. I know, I was with them when they did the thing across the street and they should have got that job as well. But, but I like to see where we're going, where we're headed, what they're going to do, how much it's going to cost, and, and how long is it going to be that we're going to be in the holding pattern? And what that cost is going to be, at least get some estimates. But we don't even know what they paid to do the consulting. So what do you want us to prove? Something in a box that we don't want to know what's in it?
We're, we're asking council to...
Because I won't do it.
Under the administration's portion, there's a resolution. We're asking to retain OHM and this project team. This is a planning, planning process, branding. We're asking for authority for up to $300,000. The proposal in here is for $255,000. It's, it's, to retain them, yeah, for $255,200 and then about now to exceed $300,000. Now, your question about the environmental, AKT Peer List, they're in the team to help us go through the materials.
Who is?
Can you, the project team consists of, and it was on the first slide...
Well, see, you're making reference to something I don't have anything on. I mean, when you say about that, I don't have reference in, in a document to follow you. And that's very important. I mean, you're talking about, you know, that little shed down the street. You're talking about a multi-million dollar facility with a multi-million dollar expense to the city. And, and, and I just, I just would like to study what comes before. I know the process, it's take, I agree with the process. But when it comes to the final recommendation, I mean, the booklet should have been here so we can review it and look at it, see what, what we recommended that's in this document and, and then where we're going to go from there. But, but marketing and branding, something that, that from what I know from experienced people is to market it and brand it before you level it isn't the right way to go. And, and these are from people who are very professional in developing lands.
If I can...
And, and so I guess I just got a lot of unanswered things in my mind, where we're headed. And like I said, I'm sure the gate got a good team, but I don't know all the answers of cost and, and where we're headed and timeline. It's just going to happen this way, this way, this way, this way. What is the cost going to be? $21,000 a month? It's not that it's going to be more than four months. Could be longer before they come back during that period of time. When they come back with an answer, is it going to be tearing down the buildings that are there and the other ones that we're purchasing? Is it going to be part of that? Is it going to be flat land? All, all the environmental issues removed and filled? Is it going to be a level piece of land? I, I see those are my questions.
I, I think we're going to address a lot of those questions through the process. Let me try to work through at least through what we're going to be doing. First off, to answer your question a little bit, branding. We're not branding the dirt or the buildings. What we're branding right now is the process that this will be rebirthed into something else, to build some community. So engagement around this is going to be something new. So if that's what we're doing, the project is vision, when the visions are complete, then you can brand what the project will be. Our team is going to analyze, analyze not only the marketplace, we're going to analyze the existing ground, the existing facilities and determine, is there anything worth keeping or not? And that will be one of the early processes we do. Once we determine whether there's anything worth that, we're then going to go and do a vision or a plan of how it would develop, could develop, because again, we're not the developers at the table, but we can show a vision of how it could develop, what the highest and best use for the property is based on the recommendation of our team. That could be tear everything down. It could be these buildings are worth saving. They could be reused for this, say that reuse these buildings. And that's all matched with the marketplace going through the process. So, and then there'll be costs with that to analyze what are the steps that need to be done. We're not going to cost a end building because a developer will do that, but there are steps that needs to be done to get that ready. We will cost those elements. So at the end of this time period, you will have a vision for what the best use of the property is tied to a physical analysis of the property, tied to a study of the market. There'll be public engagements, so at least the public is brought along in the process and brought through the process. And there'll be cost estimates relative to what infrastructure improvements need to be done to get the project ready for development. And there'll be a plan moving forward on how do you go out and market and find a developer of the property. That's the end result of our process.
So six to 12 months to 36 months, we don't get an answer as to what's, what the plan is and timeline, because I don't see time. And that then, we're going to have a building that we're going to have to secure and keep whole until such decision is made, whether or not we're going to tear down or use pieces of it?
I mean, that whole process from our standpoint is taking...
Where does that come into play then?
Well, we can, you know, again, we can, we'll be able to determine fairly quickly on the process what's worth saving and what's not. We can make that available very early on in the process. You know, our whole process will take four months to completion.
Is it longer than that? I'm sorry.
No, our whole process will take four months from start to finish.
Somebody asked a question, you've got four months and they said it takes longer.
Well, it takes longer for the ultimate development to occur, because you've got to find a developer, he's got to go something new.
You're saying you're going to find a developer in four months?
No, no. I said our process will take four months.
They're going to do their study in four months.
We're going to do our study in four months, which will have an answer to the majority of the questions you said. What's, anything worth saving? You know, if we're tearing it down, what's the cost of tearing it down? What infrastructure requirements need to make? What's the best use? Where's the market for? How do we recommend moving forward?
So coming, the process that we're going through, we're talking about paying up to $300,000 for, for OHM to look at this and then you're paying $21,000 a month on a holding pattern. And then we're talking about purchasing additional facilities that are not included in the main structures. And I guess what I'm trying to get at is what are we talking about as far as when this whole thing comes to, to getting a developer to do it? What is the cost to the city before we get a developer to fully and, and get it done? And I guess, and I guess that is really my concern. I mean, I don't want this to be, you know, something that we put water in a pail and water goes out the bottom and can we keep paying to keep it full? I mean, you're talking serious money. The present budget that you gave to us as well as what the estimate for the teardown is, that's the estimate of what negotiations are going to be on the buildings that we're looking at. And, and I'm just kind of concerned and I'm going to throw that on the table. I'm very concerned that this is, this is a process that should have a timeline so we know at the end when we're ready to roll, how much is it going to cost? Where is the money going to come from? And I think that's a good question to ask. And I guess don't, and, and I'm really surprised that we don't have a booklet as we have with all the other ones from across the street, even though the process of which went through with the other ones to come to this final recommendation. And when you get to the final recommendation, we should have their document that they presented so that we can study it. Say, hey, this is what we're looking at. This is the company that's going to do it. And, and you can turn the pages and kind of see what, and follow the steps of what's going to be done in the process in the months ahead. And, and, and I'm just concerned about it. And I don't know what the answer is, Fred, but I, I mean, I do developing and I do, I know that you can't sit on money, you can't sit under 3.2 million you got across the street, you can't sit on 4 million you got over there. I mean, usually these things go, go right down once you sign that purchase. Man, you're flying. You're flying. You can't sit on money in, in private business. And here, you know, when you come up with $21,000 a month, you know, we got the fence on tonight and, and that's 150-some thousand, whatever, 115,000, whatever that figure is, you know, that's just one thing. And we got a police station that can take care of. And then you've got other costs that may occur that we don't even know about yet. Then I heard today in the state of the city that we're going to start auctioning off things out of these buildings. Oh, which surprises you seem to do that?
May I respond, please?
Sure, absolutely.
The boundary area of this project is Greenfield, JL Hudson Drive, Northwest and Service Drive to Northland. It is actually a larger footprint of a mall. The process that we're undertaking today is purely a planning, an architectural analysis, and a branding. A number of us have sat in meetings where people have said, tear everything down, clear it, verge it. I've been in meetings where people have said, gosh, go back to the original footprint, that's salvageable. The old JL Hudson's building, parts of it may be salvageable. The underground deck, if you're familiar with the old Detroit Stock Exchange, 115 West Madden, that's a parking lot of a lot of similar characteristics, the same column width. So part of this exercise is to do a structural analysis of what's there. And you're correct, we don't own everything. Right now, we own the Macy, the former Macy, JL Hudson, Marshall Field, the mall. We're going to ask council to move on the Target. The budget presented to council on February 22nd was $5.4 million. That did not include any demolition. You had a little over $8 million to work with in the tax-facing issue of fund. So you're, we budgeted in there enough carry costs for about two years. When we made the original decisions, when we sat in this room on that Saturday morning in the summer of '15, we were talking, we estimated the carry cost would be 40,000 to 60,000 a month. We've got that right down to right now, probably about 40,000 a month by how we're handling the security. We're looking at reducing the electrical costs. We have seven transformers. I think the electric bill, a little over 25,000 a month. We figure we can cut that down at least to 5,000, 6,000. So we're looking at ways to reduce the carry costs. We're also, as we don't own the Target, we have 23,000 a month coming in revenue from Target to offset some of those carry costs. We knew all along that we were always going to have carry costs until we get to demolition. There are certain things about this site, for example, there's a three-story pump well system that goes three stories deep. And we've got those issues. We've got the issues with the former JCPenney's and the Triumph Church that we're working our way through. As we rebuild Northland Drive, we're dealing with some of the issues. So this four-month process is about the structural analysis. The branding is about changing the image, getting the marketplace to not necessarily see this as the first mall built in the country, the first mall in the country, like many other malls in the country that have experienced economic decline. How do we begin to revan, rebrand and change that image? We know we have some incredible strengths. Our strengths are the hospital...
That's going before marketing, to brand and market. What are you marketing?
If, if you go through what the, the modern practices, Urban Land Institute in Planning, there are sites... are sites similar across the country that they're literally clearing part of the parking lot and planting petunias and sunflowers. Part of this is even as we begin to change the image, maybe a future conversation, is perhaps late summer, early fall, we begin doing some programming of the site. As the fence goes up and it gets screened, we have this wonderful canvas to begin to engage the marketplace that something new and exciting is about to happen here. This planning process is an opportunity to bring people in, major stakeholders. And we're incredibly fortunate as the five companies that came out, they quickly examined this site and they looked at, my God, you've got this incredible collection of postmodern architecture. We've got a hospital, which is one of the, you know, the largest employers in the city. We've got a hospital that has a med school affiliation with MSU now. You've got a community college that's, if I'm correct with this statement, Councilman Cruz, correct me, Oakland County Community College is the second largest community college system in the country, and we happen to host-
About 20th in the country.
And you're the top, top in the country, in the state, and we've got the fastest growing campus in that system. We've got some tremendous strengths to play to. We know we have challenges. We've got a perception of Eight Mile. You know, a movie comes out about Eight Mile from a musician, and the whole world sees one thing. But you can play to that, that can be a strength. Now, so that's what this process is about. The timeline is four months. Four months, we'll know whether or not the recommendation is partial demolition or just complete, tear it all out. But we may have in that underground, 300, 400 parking spaces that we should at least go through in due diligence. If you look at the columns and the way those interior walls are built, those are not load-bearing walls. We know that this site was built as a fallout shelter. So there are things. One of the reasons Columbus, the old Toddman had a mall in downtown Columbus where the original Lazarus store was. That store is now, it's now owned by the state of Ohio, it's office buildings, and the underground six stories of parking is in place. There have been things. Cleveland, or I'm sorry, Cincinnati has a mall where the original store, and I forget which retailer it was, but the first two levels of that retailer have been converted into parking. So part of this is go through that structural analysis. We know this. We can, our objective here is to enhance and grow our tax base, the purchase. We know if you look at the outright demolition and acquisition, that our break-even cost is about 150 an acre. Just the demolition portion, 10 million to 12 million. We know in order to make that work, we need three and a half St. Bead's developments. What we did at 12 and Southfield, which the marketplace is quickly absorbing, apartments getting over the $2 a square foot, that's what we're looking at. So we know we can break even.
You're missing what I'm saying. I hear everything you're saying, I'm aware of everything you're saying. All I'm trying to say is, is that, you know, when you save anything, when you have what is left there now, you also have what developers say is wasted money. In other words, you try to take something and make something out of something that is standing, that didn't never work or won't work for what it is marketing for, now you're stuck with a building and you've got other things to tear down. In other words, you just don't save a building, you have costs related to refurbishing it or to getting it to what it is. Some of these things, I put it, you listen to what's going on in Detroit, they're talking about $32 million to retrofit one of these old buildings, you know, in Detroit. I don't intend to have this city paying those kinds of dollars, you know, to try to, or get somebody to say, well, we saved Macy's, for example, and here you are, you know, you want to buy this space, this land lease or whatever it is, and refurbish it? You know, well, they'll look at it and say, yeah, it's cost a lot of money. Give us some city money and tax abatement or whatever else to do it. I mean, that's, I'm just very concerned that, that I, in all the discussions that I had, and their people are developers all over the country, and good developers are still in business, they just, I mean, they said, level the sucker, and that takes care of branding right away because you've taken out, and I saw, you leave part of it there, that's still old Northland. And so what are you doing? You're branding, you know, this little area, this little wall of this old Northland. No, you've got to do, if you're going to do branding, you've got to clear everything out, start from scratch, rebrand it, you know. Hospital, they're not telling you anything. I know it came to me or you or anybody else that I've ever heard of and said, you know, we're in this for the long haul. You know, we're in the long haul by ourselves. And, and, you know, I don't want to be in Allen Park, you know? And that's what I see going, is we're going to need a tax increase to pay for the bonds or whatever it is to keep this thing going. Like, I just know that, that, I just thought we were going a different avenue. And I guess not having the document that has been submitted as to what the role of this OHM is going to be, and to be following the steps and keeping track of the money and track of the timeframe that is going to proceed is being blind. And, you know, everybody may know, you know, you may know, and Al may know, and somebody else might know this stuff. I don't, I don't. And as far as I'm concerned, my responsibility is to save the city and to promote it as well as develop it, but I'll be darned if I'm going to let it go down a hole on something that I don't understand. And it's as clear as I can say it. I mean, there's no reason why there isn't a book here. I mean, this stuff from a very, very raw thing, so if you live on Friday, you go through it and you say, hey, they did a good job, they picked up this company, this is what they're going to do, Plan A, B, C, D, and E, and you can follow it. And, and, you know, that's my comments.
Ms. Seymour.
Thank you. Obviously, there are many, many technical issues that have to develop with it, and the first step is, and one more thing, it's very important to have the community input, but it's also to recruit businesses in the community, what they, what they see. They might be, they might have self-interest, and you don't know that, but they might also say if this could help us, you know, I'd like to hear from them, what their pros and cons are. This is the biggest thing we've ever done, and it's going to make a break-up, I've said. I understand where Don's coming from. We all have some experience, different experience, many of us have, I have architectural experience and business experience that relates to some of this. I'd like to know what, how people are thinking, because it's going to make a break-up. This is really going to make Southfield, and it's going to change Eight Mile if we do it right. So there's no doubt that this is the biggest thing that we have done or will do, so I'm sure you understand that.
Yes.
So I'm pleased that OHM is the contractor, or the developer that I'm calling, to do the study. And it has to be right, it has to, we have to be informed as we go along, because we all have different levels of knowledge and experience. And, I mean, I remember in our plan, when it was built, and how it developed, and what we'll do. So it's very, I know you know this, but I just want to-
Yeah.
It's so important. Technical issues have to be dealt with, but all of the possibilities, I mean, businesses have to be brought in. Some will be thinking, we don't want this to be the last one, but you'll know that.
Again, the answer to your thing, our stakeholder meetings are the business.
Yes, yes. But that's, that's, this is like, is the most important thing we've ever done, other than build a city. So it's going to determine a lot about our future, and we really need to have feedback and constant input. Whether you agree with this or not doesn't matter, just making it ever-
Mr. Severs.
You know, up to this point, we have basically tried to secure the asset and understand what we had. That included having an assessment of the building, having an assessment of all the infrastructure, providing security, and doing whatever maintenance that was necessary to prevent mold or, you know, further asbestos. During this time, we have had pressure from various developments to come on the property already. And so the thought process of the committee was that rather than piecing together the development together, we should have a comprehensive plan to provide us with sort of an assessment of what the market will allow on the property, as well as preserving any or repairing any of the asset. So if in fact, we think that the basement can be used for a parking function, that saves on the demolition cost. So whatever the final product is, this is really the first step moving forward, but this product will ultimately tell the council and the citizens what piece of Northland will be demolished. That may take the $10 million proposed costs down to maybe $7 million. All right? Then we go out and we look at development. So we all believe that we want to get the asset down as quickly as we can because it's costing us a lot of money. We like to see maybe requests for qualifications for demolition, demolition companies come out late August or September. We look at probably a year of demolition, which takes us to 2017 or maybe even the beginning of 2018, where perhaps we don't see any development. But it's that planning, it's that demolition, we need an asbestos survey that needs to be done, which is going to be part of the demolition proposal, so the companies understand what to bid for. So I think the city, first of all, should be very proud that we've had developers in-state and outstate who are very interested in the property right now. But rather than piece it together, we thought that we'd go through a planning process to give us an overall comprehensive view.
Okay. Ms. Morris.
Yes, you've shown us that you have about nine, you're doing this work in 2018. Do you foresee anybody else coming on to consult with this, with the two of them?
I think right, well, again, the one area I would say is Ice Miller, who is a resource, we're not sure whether you need them or not. And so again, they are not part of the space we're competing. For us to do our study, that's a group of teams, and everybody we need to complete our four-month study is that.
And how do you envision working with your project team? Are you going to work on an as-meet basis, or will you all meet collaboratively?
We will all meet collaboratively. Only way to meet, four-month schedule, let's have multiple things going on at once. So we'll be doing public engagement while our architects and engineers are looking through the structure. So we will be doing multiple things all at the same time, and at certain points in the process, it will all come together at decision points. And I will, again, I will be acting as the project manager to lead that through. But the only way for us to accomplish this is to have all these teams. Monker will be working on branding, Banner will be working on the market study. Architects and engineers will be analyzing the structure. Tom Carter will be working with the enter to understand the marketplace. Yeah, so all of those processes will be all moving at the same time.
And they are all, they all fall within the cap of the $300,000?
Yes, their project proposal was the 255 plus 200. We just make this statement on the legal. They brought in attorney as part of their team, the resolution, and the item we talked, other consultants may be brought in. You know, no secret, I am in a dialogue about new market tax credits and some other things happening within the state of Michigan. We may find ourselves, there's this planning process, but there may be another process where we look to bring new market tax credits to the table, so a different team-
There'd be a different team, okay.
-or other consultants could come in.
So that would exceed the 300?
It's not to exceed 300. And that was the amount we put in the original project budget.
Okay. Can we have a copy of this?
And we, this should have been put in. Let me remind you the timeline on this. A week ago Friday, we put this in. Typically, even tonight is a special cow. In our normal fashion, we would have had a committee of the whole, presented this, had this in there. But in order, and we've been getting the pressure, do something, tear it down, buy more. We put through this process together, purchased and did a job. A week ago Friday, we interviewed all five companies, we scored them last Wednesday, opened up the bids, and then did the write-up in order to get it out. I can arrange to get a copy of this booklet to everyone. I apologize about this, but in our normal, our normal mode, we would have had a cow not with the regular.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just too quick, but Al kind of touched on that, actually, I was going to ask about you that too, because I think like Dan, like Don, a bit, I was under the impression that we were looking at total demolish first and then coming with a plan. But I like the idea of us trying to use whatever existing pieces of still to cut down on costs, and I think that's a, I think that's a good way moving forward. The question I did have about this was, so aside saving portions of the mall, the name as well, but did I hear you correctly when you were talking that as part of kind of bringing, giving community input, that we have to kind of preserve the name as well? I mean, it was, I guess I'm-
I didn't, yeah, I didn't. I, I said that, I didn't mean to say that, because I, you know, I can't tell you that right now, there's, you know, maybe that's something that the branding people bring in, but I certainly have no way to answer to that right now.
I know there was some conversation that I took before that, you know, it may be best to start fresh with a new name and everything, but I guess that would come out of the-
My inclination, from my experience in doing these things, it would be best to start with a fresh name. But again, I think what we tried to do here is not bring biases. Let's do the study and understand and do the engagement and do the branding, and let's see what we brought a very, very experienced team to the table. Let's, let's learn from our experts. My gut feeling would say you probably want to start with a new name. But I think that's something that we ought to be asking people and part of the process.
And just the other last thing, you, about the community engagement, the meetings that you'll be having with the community on the front end, you said, you know, four weeks is a quick turnaround. Is there any reason we couldn't go any further without having an effect on the cost of this project, or would it just prolong, would it prolong the next steps?
We could, again, we were given the task, meaning to get it done in four months. We can, again, we can work with however. Let's see if I can show you the schedule.
Or can you, if you can, that's something you can assess after the four weeks or so, and then decide to come back out again and have some more conversations with the community that? Because I do agree, like you said, that's the probably most important thing when it's running, is making sure that we got huge buyers.
There's our schedule, and you'll see through the process. Task force, you know, that's stakeholders, which are local businesses, you know, that is our public meeting, task force. Again, this is our design shred. So we're coming back to the task force, the things we're doing, the public meeting early on in the process, we're going back and doing that, and then we're coming back near the end of the process and doing the public meeting. And so we're bringing, we're trying to touch it, and what we're trying to do is spread these meetings out, you know, throughout, so we're not loading too much in in one time. But again, we-
More than one public meeting now.
There'll be two public meetings, overall public meetings, and then there'll be stakeholder group meetings, which you can't task force. The stakeholder meeting will be a local business board, or any other special interest groups that we have.
Mr. Raywell.
I just wanted to dovetail on what Fred had said. We've only owned the property in three months, and the Northland Oversight Committee has met regularly, and I think made, considering the enormity of the, and the complexity of the project, that we've made great strides. And at the same time, we've been fielding all kinds of inquiries and people who want to come in, and, oh, we've got a great idea for Northland, and, you know, we're being polite, we're entertaining those, we're not making any promises because we want, we didn't want this piecemeal. And I did have a conversation with Dr. Weinman of Providence Hospital last week, and he said, we're very much in, we're very much interested, and honestly, you haven't heard from us because, he knew that as part of the study committee, that we were going out for this, this outside study. So Providence Hospital, sure, they've been quiet, but their, their interest is still there, I mean, he told me that just a couple of days ago. So I'm happy to bring that back, because we haven't heard anything recently from them. I think we're moving along, and four months is pretty aggressive. I'm glad to see that we're going to try and do it in that time.
Mr. Raywell.
Mr. Chandler, I feel very comfortable-
Um, Mr. Chairman, I feel very comfortable with, with your protocol that's in place, and also the team and the presentation, and I'm feeling that there, there are enough safeguards in place to, to, to catch, catch something that is slipping. And I would like just to make a motion to remove, to put this on the Senate agenda if, if I'm in the appropriate moment of this time.
Oh, one way or way, until everybody gets a chance. I'll hold that until we, until everybody's had an opportunity to talk, they want to talk. Anybody, any, Mr. Malabon?
Um, just looking at some of the past projects such as Tyson's Corner, East Mall, I mean, the revitalized the area, I think it was a great project, especially, one thing that, I go to call and to put out, but one thing that East Mall, from the people that I've talked to have mentioned is, you know, the fact that the park kind of built into the, into the mall property or that, that area, and I think that's, you know, bringing, getting more of a community involved as well. The other question I had, and it's more for what the cadence of going through this comes, there'll be a website that will give us, and the general public, knowledge of where everything is in the, in the process, but what's, how will the city council be, stay informed of the different steps that are being taken, decisions that are being made? Will they be coming to our, our meetings regularly? Will they, will we have to go to the website? I guess is part of what I'm wondering.
What are the, that needs to be worked out between, uh, the planning committee and, and these folks, what kind of communication they need to establish so we're up to date on a, on a regular basis. Otherwise, we'll be sitting here wringing our hands until four months are up and, you know, then we may be surprised. Right. Uh, Mr. Fracassi.
Yeah, well, to answer your question, that's what your timeline does. I mean, you know, if there's a timeline, and certain things are supposed to be done by a certain time, you get a report, that this is what we did, this is where it happened, then you can follow it through.
Correct.
And, and, I mean, I mean, if you're expecting an email, you know, in four months, what happened, I guess that's when we look at it, you know?
Well, the, the reason I'm asking, you know, for example, I, I do project management work at my company, and we have to do, you know, weekly status reports, and then a monthly overall presentation, so, you know, there's, you have all the different phases, and then there's tasks within those phases. So after they do a stakeholders meeting, are we going to hear what happened? Are we going to wait for the whole, that whole phase is, is completed or what's been going on? That's, that's really what I'm.
One of the things that we normally do when we're recommending this in the process, we have a task force or a steering committee that will work very closely with us all the way through the process. Now, we're going to ask, is to determine who's on that steering committee. A lot of times, there's a council representative on that steering committee, you know, to know through, but that task force will be a group of selected by you guys that will, you know, work with us through that process, and it will be multiple times through the process.
I'll answer your question.
Yeah, we'll.
The other thing I, Mr. President, is are we going to get a book of what was submitted to, to the committee that went through these documents, so we can see what they, they are going to be doing, so we can at least follow?
Is that?
I just came up with this schedule, and we don't even have that.
He said he's got to get us a copy.
What is that? Is that, that can't be just a, is that the whole thing that they supplied?
It's just their proposal.
Well, keep it, I, I want our council to have it, I mean, I'm the, from the council, but I'd like to have council on that information, have a timelines so they can check things out.
Okay, let's make sure we get, we get, each one gets a copy of this.
We'll do that.
Okay. Has everyone had an opportunity to speak?
I have a comment. I'm not, I'm not stressed that I don't have anything more tonight, because what was over my head was, we had a visioning session, and we said, we would like mixed use over there. Most of us are not developers, we're not, so, we said we'd like mixed use, but we don't know what mixed use looks like. We don't know if it required tearing down the whole, whole complex or only part of it. So we, we said in our infinite bosom, why don't we go out and get somebody that does know how to do that? And that's what I think we're doing tonight, is having, well, first of all, we set, put out requests for, for proposals to, to the world, and then the people that thought that they wanted to bid on this, did. You end up winning the bid after going through evaluations, and so you're coming back to us and saying, this is what we, this is what we do for a living. And now I expect some written material, something that I can put in my hands, that I can take a look at and say, this is what we're going to get for what we're going to pay. We already know the carry costs, and we know, uh, a lot of the expenses that we're already incurring, and I expected that we were going to incur those, those expenses for a period of time, and at some point in time, they would start to reduce because something else would take the place. So I'm, today, I'm not, I'm not, uh, flunked that we don't, we don't have something in our hands, because I think, to me, we're on the front edge of this by just hiring the person that's going to tell us what it's going to cost us, so. And you gave us a, a description, and I wasn't aware that there was a book, but I should have presumed there was a book. You don't, you don't come to a, a meeting to be hired and, and just say, trust me. You put something in writing, so, uh, I'm okay with where we're at right now on this, and I don't know, I'm only speaking for myself, not the rest of the council. But if no one else has anything to say, I'm ready to hear, oh, someone has something else to say.
I just want to add something, like I said, we need to get constantly informed, because this is huge for us, and they can know that, so we really need to keep, you know, not just Al and his group of leaders, so we can know every phase and come back to us, and we can come back to the league, that's what I mean.
Absolutely. We have to know, because when it's all said and done, the council's going to be responsible for making sure we pay the bill.
And we have a lot of, you know, that experience with this community, and you'll want to be that for us, you may and may not agree, but we have to have, this has to be a good community.
I, I'm sure he clearly understands. This is not his first rodeo.
I know, but I think we're a little bit anxious than some people.
I understand the issues and understand the problem. Yes, thank you. Okay. Now I'm prepared for.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we move this forward to, to the Senate agenda.
Do you, do you want it off of the administrator's portion? It's already on the agenda.
No, Sunday agenda.
Yeah. Just a consensus around the table.
Yeah, we, we, it's on the, it's, it's on the administrator's, because, part of the, portion of the agenda, but we have to make sure that we're in agreement that it should go on it.
Sure.
And then we, then we'll do the official, okay, so we're doing consensus around the table. I'll start with, Mr. Malabon?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, it's on our agenda for the next meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, you want to go through it again.
We're going to be receiving as well.
Pardon?
At some point, you know, I'm going to have a copy.
We have another item on our agenda this evening, and that is from the library, and our librarian is here.
No, he had to step out, he had to battle the books, I apologize.
Oh. So who, is there someone else that?
He gave me, he gave me some notes.
Okay.
The library is proposing to replace two Power Edge servers and associated switches. This replaces the original servers that were installed in the library when it opened in two thousand and three. These servers hold the data that make up the catalog and, and patron data that are at the enterprise. Purchasing facilitated the bid on behalf of the library, and the recommendation is that the award go to, 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 to the two Power Edge servers, and the amount twenty-three thousand, five ninety-eight sixty-four, for total cost not to exceed three-one-four-hundred. Purchased or being made in accordance with Chapter Eight, Section one point two-nine, subsection one of the C's code ordinances, where the contract is, is, is not dependent in the neutral and no advantage to the city, which all require for better, the funds are budgeted in the library account, uh, between their computer services and their operating supplies accounts. And Ms. Lumpkin, I believe, is here for any questions.
Susan.
I don't know what question she would have, since there's no bids.
Right.
Yeah. Mr. Malabon?
Not to, to be, for instance, Dave's not here. You said they, they were originally put in in two thousand and three?
They're in the library.
But the information we have says they're only seven years old. Two thousand and three, if I do my math properly, was more than seven years old, seven years old, yeah. So is this the second set or?
Probably the second set. The library opened in two thousand and three, based on the notes the library submitted, it says they're at the enterprise.
Okay. So again, we need a consensus because it's.
This is item D on the consensus.
Yeah, we need a consensus. This time I'll start on this side.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right? That completes our five-thirty agenda. Should I call this meeting too?
Close?
Yes.
Yes, because it is a separate.
It is, it is.
Yes, it is.
But it's still a regular meeting.
But it's a, but it was held in a COW format, that will be.
Oh, so now it's different.
Yeah.
Saying no more new business, the meeting's adjourned.